Probably should have turned my microphone on, there we go. So, let me say that again. So, some improvements that were made here at Town Hall, including some guards here. You can see that we all have our masks on. I'm taking mine down because I'm speaking right now. Council dais has been cleaned up and we're taking steps to get back to normal meetings. And we'll progress as the state guidelines change. So, welcome everyone, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And if I could just take a moment, Councilman Sweeney called me and he was tied up with work. He will be here as soon as he possibly can, probably anywhere between a half an hour, an hour. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. And this is for a one, eight, two, and three, April 12th, 2021, April 14th, 2021, April 26th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C1, and this is for ordinance number 2021-6. And this is for changes to the fees, and charges, and the compliance of fee schedule, and the building permit fee.
Make a motion to constitute first reading?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary constitutes first reading. I'll just take a moment here, not go through this, but this is to kind of coincide with state fees. We were kind of in our own separate area and we had, had that for about, my God, it's been, it's been quite a while. But this will coincide with state fees. The benefit there is that as state fees change, so do ours. And there should not be major changes. I can see our building official, Steve, on the call. Unless there's any questions, it's only first reading, we'll get into discussion in second reading. Okay, hearing none, we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1, and this is for the dog kennel license renewals for 2021 to 2022.
Second. Don't finish it, I'm sorry. Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve the kennel licenses. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mary, if you could, your microphone, just hit the button. And it'll turn green once it's on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1. And this is a petition from Daniel Manchester for the Bristol Historic and Preservation Society. And this is the request to use the town comment for a flea and bear event to be held on August 21st, 2021.
Based on the recommendations, I move that we approve it. Excuse me.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Just take a moment here, is the petitioner on the call? It's okay if they're not, I'd like to, well, this council likes to give a 30-second commercial opportunity. Name of petitioner is Daniel Manchester. Okay.
Alright.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F2. This is Stephen Almazian for the Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island requesting for an exception to the flag policy.
Is Stephen on the call? So, Stephen, you'll be up in just a moment and we'll be able to hear you in a moment. If you can make sure that you unmute and if you could state your full name and address for the record and the rationale and the reason behind your petition. We can't hear you yet.
Okay, how about now?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Welcome, thank, thank you, yeah, my name is Stephen Almazian. I forgot what else you asked me to state, but the re-
Your address for the record, please.
Oh, I live at 28 Huxley Avenue in Providence.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, I'll try to make this brief because I know you have a long agenda ahead of you tonight. So, first of all, I want to thank, thank the Bristol Town Council for the opportunity to speak. And, and our hope is that the policy may be amended, as noted in the minutes of a recent meeting. But we will accept, obviously, you know, we will accept the decision of the Town Council because we understand that this is a complex issue. I've read the flag policy, I've also read the new business of the recent meeting that refers to flag requests in the future. Our concern is that, and I know this, this came up as well, is that we've been doing this for about 20 years. So like, we sort of feel like we should be grandfathered in, but again, that's the council's call. Most recently, the President of the United States, the United States House and Senate, all 49 of the 50 states, the governor of the state, both Rhode Island House and Senate, and nearly every city and town hall have recognized what is widely known as the first genocide of the 20th century. Our flag flies at the State House and all, all over the state, including, well, used to fly in Bristol. And on April 24th, which is the day the Turkish Ottoman Turks attempted to annihilate our people who had lived in these lands for over 3,000 years. Providence, Warwick, East Providence, Cranston, and North Providence hold annual special flag raising ceremonies with the mayors in attendance. I, I read about the 250 signatures and if, if that's what it's going to come to, we probably, it would be a struggle, but it's not like we wouldn't try because most of us on the committee, our grandparents lost every member of their family and were forced to march into the Syrian desert. So, it won't be for lack of effort if we don't make it. And lastly, I like to mention, I've been, I keep up with the news and I see what's going on in Warren and Bristol. And I didn't realize Barrington as well with offensive and indecent signs being put around your towns. We applaud the, the reaction of the people and the town, holding vigils and not accepting, accepting this despicable acts. The point here is that, I'm not saying like anybody's denying it in the town, and I understand the policy. It's just that when, when you don't like acknowledge it in a public manner, then it sort of gives others, these undesirables, like the okay to do their thing, even if they're doing it in a legal manner. And in conclusion, I'd, I'd like to, I know, about four or five years ago, there was an event at the Mount Hope High School regarding the Armenian genocide, which I got up and spoke at. And other than that, like, that's my, that's my, that's our position. And again, we will accept whatever decision, just noted that, like, it did say that it could be amended in the future. So, if so, great, if not, then, like I said, it won't be for lack of effort that we're trying to get this done.
Well, Stephen, first, thank you for sharing your thoughts on it. I do agree with you that, that the past and honestly present, this is not about supporting or not supporting your request. It's about fitting into the, the flag policy that we currently have. And, and I think you captured that well. So, this is not commentary on whether or not we believe this is the right thing to do. We put the flag policy in place because of a multitude of issues. And that, that's flag policy requiring 250 signatures for a federally recognized flag, which this is, is, is in place. And if, in my personal opinion, if we deviate from that, although, in fact, you know, I'm going to stop and say, we actually brought you up as part of the flag policy and we felt like it was really unfortunate to most or all of us to say that you, your petition would be an unintended negative consequence of it. Not the intention of the flag policy to make it more arduous. But it, at the end of the day, I believe that the flag policy was well thought out. I also believe that we've, I know we've missed this year, right? So, it'll be April 24th of next year. I think there's an opportunity there for you and your supporters. And you can include me as one of those supporters. And I would be happy to sign a petition if, I don't know if I can sign my own petition, but I'll try. But I'll be more than happy to speak. So, so if that gives you an idea of where I'm personally coming from on this, I would, I, I support it. But I am not personally willing to amend that flag policy because I believe in it. I do apologize to people like you that it, it has a negative consequence too, but I open up to my colleagues. Mary?
My, my, thank you. My question was similar to the fact that April 24th is passed. Is your request for the future, or is your request really that we maybe give some thought to whether or not we want to make any amendments or changes to the flag policy? Or, and then to address this again next, next year, like in February? To me, it seems like that is something, like the flag policy went into effect not even a year ago as a result of things that transpired in, you know, late, late July. So, you know, it's, we sort of not, this is the first request and I'm very well aware in the legislature for 12 years that this flag was always been flown, as long as I can remember, and involved. So, I do think, I agree with the chairman, and it's really unfortunate that you kind of caught up in this. But, you know, I, I think that we, if you look at some of the other communities that did not make such a, like a flag policy, they, they're still debating what flags should fly and there's still arguments going on every, you know, continuously. So, I agree that right now, this isn't the time, but the time has passed anyway for this year. And then we revisit this and you know what your options are and we could do it like purely in February or something like that.
That's fair. Like I said, I understand that this is a complex issue with, with what's going on. So, it's not like, you know, I'm coming here, like, trying to argue or pick a fight. It's just that we're, we're just doing what, like, our grandparents couldn't do. And, and, and we're speaking for them. And if we didn't do that, then we felt that the shame would be on us. So, we will appreciate your forthrightness and understanding. But I, and I also understand your position, so we will try to get the 250 signatures. And if we don't, like I said, it won't be for lack of effort. And, and I think unless anybody else has anything to say, I want to thank you for your time because like I said, I know you have a long night ahead of you, you people.
Counsel. Tony?
Just very briefly, Steve, first of all, I fully understand your position and we appreciate all your efforts on behalf of all your, not just your member, all your citizens, you know, of the country that unfortunately died in vain in some way. But we certainly look forward to work with you for next year.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Bristol Town Council.
Steve, I just wanted to follow up, this is Aaron Lay. Just to say, I appreciated talking with you about this today. I think that, you know, ultimately, our flag policy has actually caused us to talk and think and do a little bit more dialogue about what we're raising flags about and, and everything. And certainly, when I learned that the Congress and the federal government had acknowledged the genocide, I thought immediately to, you know, the flag that we have flown every year, the Armenian flag. And so, I think one of the things about the policy that we, we written and looking back at the minutes now, it's really coming clear. We started off with the 500 signatures, which would have been a huge burden for anybody who wanted to get a, a flag flown. But I think that 250 really makes us possible for somebody like you, Stephen, to, you know, do something like this, get the word out, explain to people what it means and everything. And then, I don't speak for my colleagues here, but certainly it seems like a lot of folks up here would be receptive to any type of request like that after it's gotten the requisite number of signatures. So, thanks again and, you know, thanks for educating us about it and speaking your truth. And we appreciate, you know, the reasonableness with which you are looking at this right now.
Great, thanks, have a great night, my night's over, but yours, it sounds like it's just beginning.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, Steve, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Motion for this council, at this point, would be to receive, actually, we have a request for an exception. So, it would be to deny that request. Mike, could you, Mr. Solicitor, would you agree with that?
Yeah, since there's a request before you, I would recommend a motion to deny the request until such time as a petition with 250 signatures is presented to the council.
Counsel, so move. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, to deny for reasons already stated by the solicitor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is a petition from Flavia Thorson from Avalon Medical Spa. This is a request to amend the tattoo ordinance to add a permanent makeup application license.
So, I'm going to start off here, I had some conversation with the solicitor a bit earlier in regards to this. The assistant solicitor, Coines, had done some research on this topic and obviously Microcilla. Also, this request, and I believe the applicant, the petitioner is, I would assume is on the call, excellent. You'll have a moment to speak just in a moment. The, the distinction here is that, or let me back up and say, we have two tattoo licenses for the town of Bristol. And that's been a longstanding number. The request here is for, a little bit different, is for an ordinance that would pertain to permanent makeup. So, not your classic tattoo, whatever that means, this is more makeup tattoo. And speaking with this listener, and Mike, if you could just kind of expound on this before the petitioner speaks, because I think it'll help with clarity on what we can possibly do here.
More than happy to do so. So, under the law, the Department of Health categorizes permanent makeup application as a tattoo. And I'm sure the applicant can explain that better. My understanding is certain things may be done to the eyebrows or whatever in a salon setting where someone's having their hair made up, which, again, under Department of Health regulations, requires a license from the local municipality because it is categorized as a tattoo. Now, Mr. Chairman, as you've pointed out, the town of Bristol has available two tattoo licenses, both of which have been already issued, so there are none remaining. And one of the ways we could address this is to add an additional tattoo license. But a tattoo license would apply to a tattoo business. Instead here, it's really a salon that someone would go into for hair and makeup, et cetera. It's really not a tattoo business. So, our suggestion is that you consider amending the tattoo ordinance to make provision for permanent makeup application and allow you to issue a license to a salon based upon that distinction.
So, we'll stop right there, I'm going to ask the petitioner, which is Flavia Thompson. I know that Chris told me that she's on the call. If you could, please, state your full name and address for the record. And I think we've covered some of your petition, but please feel free to restate your reasons for the petition.
Hi, so my name is actually Kimberly Parent and I am a representative of Avalon Medical Spa. And I am here on behalf of Flavia Thorson.
Could you state your full name and I'm, but your address for the record, please?
Yep, Kimberly Parent and 58 Berkeley Ave in Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so basically, you've covered it very well. We are interested in offering permanent makeup services to our existing and potential clients of Bristol and surrounding cities. We, for years, have had to send our patients up to Boston to have this service done. And we are ready to keep the money in our establishment as well as the town of Bristol.
That was wonderfully to the point, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I, I want to open up to my colleagues. I personally, I, I thought about this and I'm sure you all have too. And we've had a number on, because of a multitude of reasons, I just feel that this is different. I don't feel that this is a tattoo parlor, as I think the solicitor clearly pointed out. I think we have an opportunity here, potentially to add X amount, I don't know what the council's appetite is for it, and potentially look at this and maybe review it in a year. And if there's no issues, continue with it, potentially increase it. But I'm open to my colleagues' thoughts. Mary?
Right. Excuse me, I think it's a, I think it's fine, I think it's a good idea. I know this is a wave of, like, new ways to do makeup. And I'm sure that there are lots of different people that you come in contact with that may need this service for, because they're not really good at putting on makeup like me, although I don't know if I would do that in my eyes. But, or people who may have had, you know, chemo or something and have lost, or alopecia or something like that and lost their eyebrows or whatever the case may be. So, I think that it's a, a good thing and if spas want to have this or hair salons, I think it's, I think it's okay. And I think the question is, do we want to be, I mean, I'm sure the person has to go to school for some amount of time to be really good at doing this, especially because you're doing lips and eyes and things like that. So, I'm not sure that every salon's going to want to have this, this available. And, but I do think, you know, is it the person that's going to be licensed? Or if somebody's going to go to your salon, to your, your spa, and then also pick up a couple of days somewhere else? Is it that the person that would be licensed? Or is it that, the, the business? So, you know, if another, like, I guess what I'm talking about is like the competitive advantage. If some, another spa wants, it's kind of what we find with liquor licenses. Like, we're always adding them and should we just put a couple of them in for this purpose? Because, or should we just start with one? I guess that's my only question, I mean, I fully support it. I think it's, you know, a fine thing and I was doing a quick search online. And, you know, there's lots of places like around Rhode Island, East Greenwich, other places that have this makeup, type of makeup and just as, as its own standalone business. Not even just as part of a spa or a salon, so. Can you tell me just a quick, I mean, Kimberly, could you tell me just a quick, like, what amount of education, what does somebody have for training for this, you know?
So, it really varies. I have been talking to the health department in terms of the regulations for tattoo artistry and permanent makeup. And for the state of Rhode Island, I would basically be going off to training. And I forget how many hours it is, but I, it is a, it's a pretty extensive training course. And then I would have to have like X amount of training, like hands-on as well, X amount of hours. And the tattoo board was fine with that. And really where we got hung up was that we have to have the medical spa licensed as a tattoo shop. And that basically means, to my understanding, means that we are following the same amount of sanitary and sterilization techniques that a tattoo shop would. And all the, the same rules and regulations that a tattoo shop would also follow is, you know, we would have to also follow and regulate and all of that. Which primarily, most of them, we already are, since we are a medical spa. But we just have to run it by the town council and hope that we get that licensing.
I think it's a good service to add to your repertoire to any of the salons, actually. Thank you, you'll be the person doing it then?
Yes, yep.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, if I'm hearing correctly, that she stated it has to be set up as a tattoo?
Well, what I, I believe Mike said that we could delineate a standard tattoo salon or parlor and then have a specific category just for permanent makeup tattoo.
That's correct, yes.
Right, so, so that way, it's, it's that it's only available for that, so it wouldn't be your standard tattoo parlor. And I guess the question is, is if this council sees value in it, how many do we start off with? And what's the review time? Personally, I'd like to see us look at it at one year after a license is issued. And that gives us enough time to see both the benefits of it and potential negatives, hopefully there's no negatives.
So, if I'm hearing correctly, then we would actually have to add some number to what we currently have because we only have two and it's been used up.
I agree, so the solicitor, we could refer this to the solicitor to amend the ordinance to allow this, we'll call it the split, right? And then this council can decide how many it wants specifically for a permanent makeup. So, so there would be step one, create the, amend the ordinance, and, and inside that step would be how many do we want? That's what I hear. Mike, you agree with that?
I, I do, and what I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is when I amend the ordinance, if you so desire, I would begin with two such licenses, just to be consistent.
Well, you just, were you reading my mind? That's exactly what I was going to propose, at least to, to start off with.
Any other discussion before I ask for motion? So, Tony, can I take that as a motion?
Yes, please.
I love it, okay. So, motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to refer the solicitor to amend the current tattoo ordinance to allow for a separate, what's that, please?
For two additional.
Two additional, specifically denoted as permanent makeup application license, I guess. Mike, I'll defer to you for those with the verbiage.
That's fine.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And to you, the next meeting, we would have a first reading and then the meeting after that would be the second reading. And if it ends in a positive, that's when those two licenses would be available.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is for appointments. This is G1A, Bristol Housing Authority for a tenant position with, to fill an unexpired term to expire January 2023. And we have two applicants with interest in appointment, Caswell, Alessio, and Carol Poyet.
So, we just need to set up interviews for both of these candidates? The council is amenable?
Yeah, make a motion to, to set up the interviews. At the, what do we, move it to the town, the clerk, we arrange the interviews?
If everyone, actually, let's, is there a second?
Second.
So, discussion is that if everybody's okay, maybe, Madam Clerk, we could offer the, I believe our next meeting is the 26th. If everyone is available, maybe we can meet a half an hour early for both of those, is that okay? Perfect, and we can, we'll, we'll see if the applicants are available. Do any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the appointment for the harbor commission. This is G1B, and this is to fill two terms. One is to fill an unexpired term to expire March 2023. And the other is to fill the unexpired term of a second alternate to expire in March 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint John McDonald for the full membership.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to appoint John to the full, John McDonald, to the full position? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oops, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, you know, one key thing here about Ms. McDonald is that he represents the fishing, the fishermen and the commercial fishermen. And that is something that, you know, we've all talked many, for many years about that issue here in Bristol. And making sure that our fishermen, both shell fishermen and commercial fishermen are represented. And that though our, our waterfront continues to be a working waterfront and not just recreational. So, I think this is important, important to have someone like that on this, on the commission.
Very well said, thank you.
Mary, I could not concur any better, you know, well said, well put. And obviously, that is the reason why I made a motion as well.
Of course, yeah, and, and we, like, we've talked about it for many, 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 many years. We've all been very concerned about that whole evolution at the waterfront. And, and if you don't be specific that that is your intent to keep that, it's easy to go by the wayside.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the- And the, uh, the, we have the second alternate now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Tori Peterson to the alternate, uh, member.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, to appoint Tor Peterson to the second alternate position. Is there any discussion?
I, I'd just like to say, I think we interviewed all the candidates and I thought they were excellent. And, uh, they all came with a different point of view and, uh, with the harbor at the heart and Bristol at their heart. And, uh, I just appreciate everybody stepping up to the plate.
Again, well put. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G1C, and this is for the recreation board, and this is to fill a unexpired term to expire February twenty twenty-three for a second auxiliary.
I make a motion, we appoint Joseph Demello.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to appoint Joseph Demello to the second auxiliary position recre- board, excuse me, recreation board. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is G1D, and this is for, um, the recommendation to the auxiliary harbor manager.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that. I don't, we can take them together, but they're two positions, if I'm correct.
There are, yes.
And, uh, that, uh, we interviewed these candidates, Melissa Benavides and Justin Char- Charrest. I think that's how you say it?
Charrest, I would guess, yeah.
Thank you. And, um, so I, they both have experience, uh, having worked in this with the harbor and, you know, in the summers and so forth. So I would move that we appoint them.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to appoint both Melissa Benavides and Justin Charrest. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G1E, and this is for the planning board of review. To fill a term to expire, uh, April twenty twenty-four. We have Tony Mergo with interest in reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint, uh, Anthony Mergo.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Anthony Mergo to the planning board. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G1G, and this is for the police pension funds board of trustees to fill a term to expire April twenty twenty-four. And we have Raymond Falcoa, also with interest in reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Ray to the position.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Ray Falcoa to the pension fund board of trustees. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And before we go any farther, this is the part where I say for all of us, thank you. Thank you for, well, I see some names here that have been here for literally years and serving the community and volunteering, and some that are new. And we thank them all equally. We take, we appreciate the time that you take, and this council appreciates the time that you take to give back to the community and make it what it is today. So again, thank you. Madam Clerk.
The next item on the agenda is H1. This is Mary Narello from eleven Cottage Street. This is a request for removal of accessible parking space, and this is second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the removal of the parking space. And we certainly appreciate that Mary did reach out to us to do that, because it is limited parking on that street.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, that this would constitute second reading to remove accessible parking space on eleven Cottage Street. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H2, and this is town administrator Contenti in regard to a community energy aggregation update.
Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. So, uh, our last meeting relating to the proposal from Good Energy for community aggregation, we were asked to, uh, communicate with Good Energy, get some additional details, and were brought back. That was last fall, uh, when, uh, discussed before the council. So we've had a, a number of communications, myself, the town solicitor, and the police chief, with Jamie Rhodes from Good Energy. And at this point in time, I provided a written recommendation, but we think, uh, we take a break from this until we get some additional data coming in, uh, from Rhode Island that relates to, uh, the performance with other communities. There are, as you, uh, may recall, there are some communities in Rhode Island that have signed up with Good Energy. However, the program is not up and running yet. So we don't know, um, if they're going to be, uh, we don't know what the, the predictors are yet on savings. We did ask for some additional information from the performance, uh, with community aggregation in Massachusetts. And it's pretty clear that most communities, uh, there are a few outliers, uh, at the beginning of the program that, uh, didn't see a, uh, savings. But for the most part, most communities do save, uh, save money overall to their customers. Another concern we have, and it's something that the Department of Public Utilities and Carriers is looking into, is the inability for the program to, um, to be available for those that have trouble paying their bills. So it would ultimately be up to the town of Bristol to notify customers if they're unable to pay their bills, that they're no longer allowed to be in the program. So until those changes are made, and I believe Good Energy is working on some changes, uh, where, uh, e- everyone would be allowed to participate, even if they have trouble, uh, paying their bills. So our recommendation, uh, that was the three of us, the solicitor, the police chief that has experience in, in the energy industry, is that we wait and, uh, we wait to see how the other communities, uh, are doing before Bristol commits to it. The problem, uh, we see is that this is, it's an opt-out. So all of our residents, our consume, uh, energy consumers for electricity in Bristol would be switched over. And they would have to opt out of it. And, uh, again, to repeat, uh, myself, um, the customers that we currently have that are, uh, having trouble paying their bills wouldn't be able to participate. And if they do run into trouble, they would be asked to, uh, to go back to the standard, uh, service to National Grid. Those are the reasons that we just think we should pause a little bit longer and wait to see how things work out here in Rhode Island. There's two, Massachusetts and Rhode Island are two different energy markets. The volume is different in between states, so we're just not sure yet, um, if it is going to be successful. We're pretty optimistic that it will be, but to take that chance and switch over everyone right now, uh, uh, we're not ready. One last thing is that, uh, energy choice is out there. So if, you know, any homeowner is interested in going more green, using more renewables, they can do that now. They can also shop around for, uh, rates through Empower RI. So.
We just answered the telem- telemarketer's, that call.
But, uh, we, uh, you know, in, 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 Mr. Rhodes was, uh, very helpful, and he said that he could help us when we're ready to, um, to take the next step. He could help us with an RFP, um, to, uh, look for in the, uh, a company that could help us find the cheapest rate.
Excellent.
We just think we might want to wait a little bit longer to see how the other communities still, it's not up and running yet.
Counsel.
Appreciate the update. Um, I know that, uh, the commission indicated that it expects to vote this coming month on Barrington, Central Falls Province, South Kingstown this month. So based on those communities, we'll, you know, be able to get some more, more data back. So let's see how the, see how it goes. Make sure it's right.
Maybe we can review this. What's a reasonable time? A year out? I don't mean to be too far out, but I would assume that we would need a
Six months or a year, maybe eight months?
I would think we would need a whole season of high energy use, both in summer and winter, right? The, because it's different usage, right?
Want to do a six-month status check?
I, I defer to my colleagues. What do you think?
I would think six months to see how it's going. And, you know, if people, if people are happy with it, I mean, have an idea. That would take us past the summer, which is like, I, and at least in my case, the highest energy use, uh, that goes on with the air conditioners and things like.
So we're in, we'll call it the beginning of May. So, um, six months would be November. So the end of November meeting, is that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yeah.
And that'll give time for it to, you, you mentioned that, that bill's going to be, I'm sorry, the commission is, uh, voting in the next week or so.
On those communities.
Okay.
So we should have a lot of data by now. You don't mean at all?
Get it. So we can get an update.
You know.
Okay. Mr. Administrator? That's what I thought, but. If my memory is correct, it has to do with the feed of natural gas that we have coming in, is that there is a limited amount and heating takes a lot of that. Where the summertime, the electricity production comes from other areas, not locally, right? So um, I per, I would like to see us have revisit this when we have real data that we can chew on and decide if we want to take a next step. But I, again, defer to my colleagues. Well, do you want to stay at the six months? Or would you like to? Maybe we can go to the spring next year, uh, and, and
Well, I'd
But I'm open to suggestions.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we review this in a year from now. You know, and give us ample time to have a full cycle, you know, for that. With the thank you to the town administrator, Chief, uh, uh, Chief Lynch. No, I'll get that. And Solicitor Ocello, you know, thank you for your efforts.
Is there a second? For discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
And, and then I have a question. Um, I noticed that it, it says here that the Division of Public, uh, Division of Public Utilities and Carriers has raised several concerns for low-income customers. And I believe that that's what the town administrator was talking about in terms of, you know, people not being able to participate in certain types of low-income programs and everything like that. Is there, uh, currently any decisions that are underway now at the Public Utilities Commission that we're waiting for to hear about? Whether that changes some of the policies in place for them? Or?
Mr. Administrator, Chief, it's, you tell me.
Chief, can you, uh, you add, uh, can you respond, please?
Yes, the, the Division of Public Utilities in Carriers is the sister or the investigative agency for the Public Utilities Commission. So they're an indispensable party to all dockets held at the PUC. Um, and the le- legal department weighed in, uh, to the PUC, uh, who's kind of sit like utility judges, and raised, uh, some issues relative to our state's most vulnerable populace, uh, some low-income people, our elderly people. And the big issues were that in statute is what they call the araridge management plan. So, for instance, if somebody had lost their job and they had fallen behind, um, on their utility payments and they were subject to termination, if they entered into the agreement, um, to, uh, make a certain payment, um, two-thirds of their araridge can be forgiven. And the way that it works now is if they go with a third-party supplier, they're not eligible for that program. The other thing, um, that happens is if you notice, there was a big reduction in the rates with the spring. Uh, when the pipeline constraint for natural gas is no longer there, our utility rates historically drop in the off-season or the summer season, and the rates are drastically cheaper than they are, uh, in the winter. So one of the things that people do is they budget bill. They have a constant bill for twelve months. And because the, you're separating National Grid with a third-party supplier, people can no longer budget bill. That was a concern for people that like to pay the same bill month over month over month. And the other issue is, is that currently there is no, uh, program for purchase of receivables, uh, for, um, uh, the utility or the third-party suppliers, which means that if your bill is a hundred dollars a month and you only have fifty dollars this month to send in, that money will only go to National Grid. National Grid will only make a payment to the third-party supplier when their portion of the bill is satisfied. So those were the areas that the state regulator weighed in. They were, they, they thought that the process w- was hindered. And I know, um, as we spoke to Mr. Rhodes, they were working with the division and the commission, maybe to lower some of those issues. Some were going to require statutory change. I have not seen a bill to take away any of those provisions, and some of them are rules and regulations, um, at the commission level. So uh, I hope that kind of answers your question. But, uh, there are some, it could, it could save the residents money. Um, and there could be some issues for, uh, some of our residents that are going through a difficult patch. And and I, I think that the town is, is in a good position to see where the pricing, uh, goes in comparison to National Grid. In Rhode Island, historically, I can't tell you, um, I can't answer from Massachusetts because they did beat what we call the street or the standard offer or default rate. But in Rhode Island, uh, I have to give kudos to National Grid. They do a very good job of hedging and buying, um, uh, energy, uh, for us as ratepayers. Uh, because of the, the program that they have that's regu- that is, uh, regulated, uh, by the division, you know, in the commission. So there's a lot of oversight in Rhode Island, and that's why we do have competitive rates. And National Grid does not make any money, um, on the rates uh, as it stands now. They make everything on the distribution side, not on the commodity.
I guess the other question I have is, if we don't go out to bid with the collection of folks who are going out, or towns that are going to bid right now, will there be a chance that we lose out on the leverage from going to market with going to that supply market or whatever with that group of other towns?
Yeah, so sooner or later, you know, all of the towns could end up with Mr. Rhodes, and then they, you know, uh, then they become the driver of the market. So, yeah, yeah, in, in, in time, uh, counselor. Yeah, you, you could see that. You know, right now, National Grid certainly, you know, um, has the lion's share, you know, about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, uh, gas customers, if my memory serves me cor- correct, and about three-hundred, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand electric customers. Um, i- is a good estimate. So that a National Grid customer, so, um, you very well could see, um, see that happen, you know, five, ten years down the road.
I guess the, uh, the other question is, if we get in a, I gue- I guess what I'm really asking is, if we get in a year later, are we still going to be able to band together with these other towns and kind of get the same rates that they're getting? Or are we on our own and, or we have to form alliances with other towns to go out to market to negotiate?
Yeah, you know, it's no different than buying a stock. You know, when you buy in, if you buy in high or you buy in low, you know, you just don't know. Um, you know, rates traditionally, you know, creep up and, uh, there's a problem in Rhode Island. It's all about pipeline. It's all about capacity, you know, and, um, and, uh, that, that's the reason why Rhode Island has some of the highest rates in the country. Um, you know, if, due to the fact that there's a constraint for natural gas, you know, the, the topic of pipeline, you know, expansion, um, would drastically reduce, uh, our energy costs. But, you know, that, that's a that's a topic for the general assembly in, in, in the PUC, is, you know, you have a balance between that and renewables and, and, uh, um, so, uh, that's why Rhode Island has such the hot, such high rates, um, right now, is, is because that while there's been certainly a pouring of renewables in, which, which all of us support, um, predominantly, it's still ninety-five percent, you know, um, based on a, a, a form of fossil fuel, natural gas being the cleanest one of all. Um, but we're still about ninety-five percent of our portfolio, uh, comes, um, from a fuel, fuel source.
And Chief, I, I just have a quick question. So say, at the end of the month, all the, say hypothetically, all these communities sign up for aggregate energy, good energy. It's my understanding that there's no obligation to ask for a plan that doesn't obligate the town in any way. Um, that was my understanding, that even if we wanted to just take another step and look at what the the data would be, then we could, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't commit us to anything. That's my understanding.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay.
Obviously, from Mr. Rhodes, yes, you, you still would have the opportunity to say yea or nay.
Okay. It's good. It's good. We have our options, you know?
I just wanted to follow up on two questions. And one of them is what I was thinking is along the lines of that Aaron raised. I thought when we first heard, and I could be wrong, but I thought when we first heard this proposal, you know, you would bundle in with other communities, and that was what you'd go and you'd get the best rate. Be, the more communities involved, the better, the lower the rate would be. I mean, it's not cumulative. In other words, if the whole state goes in at some point of the, let's say, next three years, is, is, is it going to be that the whole state is going? Or, you know, thirty of the cities and towns are going to be again bidding or getting the lowest rate? Or is it going to be these groups and cohorts of, of cities and towns? So this group here negotiated this rate because there were five communities, and this one did, had ten communities that they negotiated with. And then is, somebody else might only have two that they negotiated with. And how is that going to work? Ultimately.
Uh, I really don't know the, uh, portfolio strategy, you know, of the supplier that's, um, you know, Good Energy. I really don't know wh- what their, uh, I really don't know wh- what their uh portfolio strategy, you know, is. I can't tell you in Rhode Island, um, the reason why National Grid has, I would call a stable rate. It's still very expensive, but um, so when they hedge, uh while I was with the the division, um, so they'll buy two years out. They'll buy uh a blend of the portfolio will be two years, twenty four months, twelve months, um, six months, and then we'll buy um uh what we call on the spot. Um, so you have a blend. So you 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 are really looking at, you know, uh rates, pro forma rates, and and you're you're developing, you know, a very good strategy and portfolio. I honestly don't know what the strategy is uh for good energy. And certainly when National Grid goes out to buy energy, you know, they're they're guaranteeing to buy, you know, a certain amount. Um, uh, all of our energy is is pool buying. It all comes out of ISO New England. So um uh, but as the administrator did say, you know, by taking some pause, there's still an opportunity for any Bristol resident. If they go to Google or do a search, Public Utilities Commission, go to the PUC website, um, it or go to Empower RI, um, you can go, uh, the state has a regulated site. Um, and you can put in how many average kilowatts, you can go to your energy bill and you can see um how many kilowatts your residence is using. And um you can plug it in. Trad- traditionally, you know, a household will use um five hundred kilowatts. And um, but we all know people with air conditioning and swimming pools can get way up there. Uh, so they can save some money on the short term. They just have to really watch it when they come out of contract. Um, so there's an opportunity to save money currently. If any Bristol resident goes to that site, they can plug in. They can look to see if there's a competitive supplier right now that can save them some money. Or if they choose to pay more than the standard rate because they really uh want to support renewables and green energy. As the administrator said, there's an opportunity to do that. Um, and I built that site, uh, I'm very proud to say, uh, with Lieutenant Governor McKee, uh, when he uh came into office. That was the first thing uh that he wanted to uh uh provide people was competitive choice.
Can I just ask a follow up question? And that is on the uh low income issue that was raised. Um, he said it's really not been totally resolved yet, but yet you're starting off very in the very near, they're they're starting off in the very near future with some of our poorest populations in, you know, Central Falls, Providence. I mean, that's where we have many, many, many low income people. So how is that going to be resolved in the near future for these communities? Because what did you say they were, Steve? That there was Central Falls, Providence, is it Pawtucket?
Remember, that was a few, yeah, that was six, that was a few months ago. But yeah, the rates, the rates are different and I think they go, they use like a zip code. So it's really somewhat, seems somewhat unfair how different rates uh are applied to different communities. And it seems like the poorer communities pay more for energy.
I'm talking about the issue of the low, low income people where they can't pay the whole bill at the time or they're behind and there won't be those programs. It just seems odd to me that they would be starting with those communities. If they haven't resolved this issue yet.
Yeah, I know. I know that they met with the PUC. They raised those particular issues and um subject may be to correcting Mr. Rhodes, or I I have no problem with checking in with the PUC to see if, it's called the ararage management plan, Rhode Island General Law thirty nine two one uh, open close bracket D one, um, and that was obviously a legislative statute to help people that were struggling uh with their utility bills uh to get caught up um and to get their ararage uh behind them uh to avoid uh long term um shut off. So and the other issue, like I said, was the budget billing for for those folks like myself who like to have that steady bill every month. So you can kind of plan out your finances rather than high, low, high, low uh e- every month based on usage. So they took, uh, they take a six month or a twelve month historical look into what your previous bill was. And National Grid will allow you to um make that make have a constant, constant bill. So those were the issues that the state regulator raised uh to the commission. Um, and uh um you know, those to my knowledge have not, um, those issues haven't been formally addressed. But again, subject to correction, um, when we do check, if you guys decide to 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 have a look back, um, I have no problem with checking in and and finding out the status on that.
Anything else?
This is just for a discussion amongst us, but um like even if we did do like a twelve year and we said, we want to sunset this and look at it in in twelve years. Or I'm sorry, not twelve years, twelve years would give us all kinds of data. Um, but if we said like uh one year and let's say that, you know, something comes up or a decision by the PUC is made that kind of makes us feel a little bit comfortable with like how they're going to treat low income residents and everything like that under this new system, then we can always bring it perhaps back up or work with the administrator to look in, look into the possibilities that we have with with good energy, right?
So I would say that nothing precludes us from if there was a drastic change, significant change, whatever you want to use for terminology. I don't see anything precluding us from being able to discuss it just because we put a year look on it. I think that's more, Mary, you called it a tickler file, I guess, would be just to make sure that we don't lose sight of if if there's an opportunity here we want to look at, then it doesn't fall off our radar. So answer the question directly. If we say a year and it turns out six months, we want to look at it again, certainly we can look at it. What else? Is there any other discussion? So the motion on the floor and seconded, motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, is that we review this in a year. And I think that uh that part of the record now, Aaron, will say that uh we did discuss that too. And if there's a reason that we should look at it prior to that year, then certainly we can. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Thank you, Chief.
The chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I one. And this is the resolution for the Bristol Fourth of July celebration for twenty twenty one. Did receive a memo from the um Chairman, Chairwoman Michelle Martins in regards to a correction on number sixteen. That correction is
Oh, yes, it's, yeah, I got it right here.
Not be able to perform this year because of due to COVID, but she does look into continuing it after that. So.
I make motion that we approve uh with the exception of uh number sixteen. Um, but it's also uh nice to see that in fact we have this before us and uh to see this becoming a reality that we can bring back the Fourth of July to Bristol.
Good period.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve the resolution. Any discussion besides what's already been stated? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I look forward to this season as much as all of you.
The next item on the agenda is I two, and that's the request for executive session.
I'm gonna take that up at the end of the meeting.
Next item on the agenda is I three, and this is Sheila Dobin from the Bristol Warren Education Foundation in regards to the town council support of the organization and sustaining sponsorship program.
Chris, is Sheila on the call? So Sheila, if you could state your full name and address for the records and talk to us about your petition, please.
Absolutely. My name is Sheila Dobin and I live at fifteen Cottage Street in Warren. Um, thank you so much for letting me have a few minutes of your time tonight. On behalf of the Bristol Warren Ed Foundation, I want to thank you very much for your support over the years. Your generous donation and sponsorship of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars last year was particularly important and helpful. Um, when you pledged that support last winter, we had no idea that our two twenty twenty fundraisers would be canceled, that our twenty twenty one B, um, our in person fundraiser would be canceled as well. But um because of our support from community partners like you, we were still able to support our teachers during this crazy year when they really needed it. Um, we introduced a just in time grants program, which is a rapid funding initiative, uh simplified the application process, was able to support some amazing projects. The favorite of mine was the uh Hugh Cole Nature Path, which was um, the brilliant idea of PE teacher Tracy Earl gets kids out of the classroom into nature at a time when space and safety issues are on everyone's minds as well as emotional wellness issues. Um, just to give a another quick, quick update, we've had some great events that we've been working on. Just last week, we had a virtual workshop on child and family wellness on mental health during the time of the pandemic. We had some great panelists at that event and a good turnout. And on June fifth, we'll host our community, a virtual community celebration, which is a gathering to uh recognize the incredible work of our teachers and what we can all accomplish when we come together as a community. Um, also just to celebrate making it to this uh to the finish line of this marathon of a year. So um, you know, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but it's not lightly that we make this ask to our community partners. It's been a painful year for many, but if the Bristol Town Council is able to continue to support us in our quest to promote educational excellence in our district, we would be most appreciative. Thank you so much.
Eric? I would just make a motion to um support at the same level as last year, the twelve fifty.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Thank you for doing all of this. I mean, it's been a hard year for everybody and everybody's had to be creative on how they raise their money in a virtual world.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your support.
So motion made by Mary, seconded by Aaron, correct? I didn't write that down. I apologize for to support on last year's number of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Mary, can I assume that uh council contingency is what that's proposed?
Yes, correct. Yes, I'm fine.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in.
Sheila, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hearing none. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I four, and this is Joseph DeRosa, thirty five OPG Drive. And this is in regard to the Bristol Hometown Hero Project, a banner to honor military members.
Chris, is Joseph on the call? I understand Monique also on the call. Is that correct? Okay, so if you could unmute both of them, uh, Joseph and Monique, if you could both separately state your name and address for the record and also share the right, the reason for your petition, please.
Hi, my name is Joseph DeRosa. I live at thirty five OPG Drive, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, hold on. Let me just move something here. Okay, and um I think Monique, Monique is on the line too, I believe.
Yes, I am. Um, I'm Monique Letessa. I live at one oh eight Kikumua Avenue here in Bristol.
Welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
So go ahead. Tell us why, what the petition is, what it's about, please.
Okay, we would like to uh introduce to the uh town of Bristol and the town council uh as the patriotic town. And the Fourth of July parade coming up very soon, well, very soon, in a few months. Anyway, I'm just hoping everything is going to go like it was before so we can enjoy ourselves and enjoy our beautiful town. But we decided with the members that we have um to start this banner program, which is called Bristol Hometown Heroes Project. That name might change a little bit, but what we will be doing is actually putting banners up to honor our vets. This is strictly for the military.
Joe, do you want me to hop in um and talk about what our mission is for the committee when we came, how we came about as a committee?
Yes.
Okay, so there uh were many um people that were very interested around town um in honoring our um military individuals that have contributed to um serving and currently serve. Um, and we did some research on different uh companies uh that could produce banners. And we did find this company, um, militarytributebanners.org that actually fits the bill for us. So our mission um of this committee is to honor um our our military um in Bristol. Since, as Joe said, we're the most patriotic town in the country. This program aligns with our current celebration of the Fourth of July. Um, that's what, you know, the Fourth of July is built on is honoring those individuals. Um, so the program is designed to help communities never forget the brave men and women who have served and those currently serving our nation today.
Thank you.
You also, if I may, uh, there is a banner. There's a copy of the banner. I believe it's there in the town council chambers.
Yes, hanging.
No.
It is, in fact, like, we don't dare change the view at the moment. We're in a uh continued state of improvement with our uh new system here. Every time we uh mess around with the camera too much, we lose it.
We may not know how to do it.
Oh, see, slowly but surely. No, we know how to do it.
Oh, we do.
Kind of like
There you go.
There you go.
There it is.
Nice job.
So, so um Rhode Island has no towns currently um participating in this program. Massachusetts has four towns, Belchertown, East Hampton, Haverhill, and West Springfield. And when you go through those towns, those banners are flying um on their telephone poles. Um, this banner, if you were to take it down, the picture is in the front and the back, so it can be seen from a a two way. Our committee is dedicated to taking this on. The the uh company sets up the website. Uh, the company sends up uh the materials that we need to promote it. Um, the families pay through a um online system. They send the information into the company. Um, the banner that you see is an example of what they would look like. Except for the picture, of course, their loved one, um, picture would change. Um, and it would fly from the dates that we have is from Memorial Day to, Joe, what was it? Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, yes.
Right. And we would love to have these flags fly from one end of Bristol to the end of, the other end of Bristol on Hope Street and Medicom. The families are the ones that pay for the banners and the brackets.
How much is that, by the way?
Well, um, so we are looking at, and Joe, you know, the committee, all of us, it's just, there's six of us, Joe, how many, six or seven of us?
Yeah, that, in fact, I'd like to state their names just to be on the record that uh
We should have done that from the beginning.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I'm uh, but uh it's uh Lou, uh Nelson Lewis, who who is the captain of the Defiance Host Company, number one. And then there's Paul Valaro, Dave Benavides, David Koschow, myself, Monique, and um Stephen Scuba, who's uh, who's knowledge of military and is retired and does a lot for the Veterans Council. He's a, he's an asset to us too. And also, and I can honestly say Paul Valaro actually has quite a few names already. And I think he came up with the name of the first, first person that died, Bristol that died in um um Vietnam War. Uh, so we're looking at all the, all the possibilities and all the names of everybody that that and get out to the families and let them make the decision if they want to. And also the banner size, if that's, if anybody would like to know, it's twenty four by forty eight is the one that the committee came up with to use. So twenty four inches wide, forty eight inches tall. Um, brackets come to mount on the pole either on both sides or just on one side, uh, just on either the front side or the bell toward the sidewalk, however we want to install it.
Monique, I'd like to go back to Mary's question, which was
Yes.
what should a family member or family expect to pay?
So a family um would pay um a fee of two hundred dollars and they could have that banner fly each year for an additional small cost of, you know, worth, we're thinking ten or twenty dollars. We're not set in in the pricing of putting it up the following year. Um, these banners last um up to four or five years. These banners last, um, up to four or five years. They're pretty heavy duty. And they are also, um, resilient to the sun, the sun in the, in the wind. So there is a small cost for, between, we're asking for $200. There's a small fee in there for, um, a donation piece where if there is a family that is in need, that wants a banner, we're looking for also businesses that might want to, um, honor a veteran in our community that maybe the family can't afford a flag. So any extra money that comes into the account is going to go for donations. This company also has what's called the Gold Star Banner. And the Gold Star Banner is a program where it's a commitment. They will print at the cost of the banner for those who lost their lives in the Gulf Wars as well as those who died due to inner struggles of those wars. So those banners would be free for those family members. It also have, uh, free banners for our new enlistments. Men and women who have, who have joined the services currently and who are in the services to honor them. So those banners are free for the families.
So a couple of things, um, I, first, I think that this is an outstanding idea. I, from what we know so far, it sounds very much in keeping with what Bristol is all about. So hats off to all of you for taking the initiative to, uh, to put this together and then also to come in front of this council to, to petition. So I, so far, it sounds very appropriate to me personally. Couple of things that I would like us to see is I, and, and obviously I'm sure my colleagues have some questions and other comments that they'd like to make. I, I, to me, it would seem like the next best step is for us to refer this to the Veterans Council, and I know Steve Scuba is a member of the Veterans Council, and ask for their, uh, official recommendation. They are, uh, are, they are the people that we would talk to on something about this. Again, I do think it's absolutely appropriate, sounds, sounds good. Everything I've heard so far sounds great. I would also, uh, on the, on the not so fun part of it, Mr. Solicitor, if you could look into, is there any liabilities on the town end of things? Where do these liabilities lie? For example, if the flag were to break off, cover a car's window, and an accident were to occur, I know that's, it's, we have to think about these things. So certainly something that I'd ask, we don't need an answer this evening, but something we can talk about and how that would handle. But colleagues, thoughts?
Well, I would like to follow up on the cost, um, because I'm glad that you said that you would do some fundraising for it. That's, that's what I asked you, there was, you know, there could be an elderly widow who would love to have this, but really at such a fixed income could not possibly afford that.
Correct.
Be doing additional fundraising so that you could apply for like a, a scholarship or a free or a reduced rate. Um, I think that is like probably the biggest concern. And then I think the other thing is, in a very optimistic way, I mean, there's a lot of flag poles on both sides of the two streets you just mentioned. So, I mean, not flag poles, I'm telephone poles. But if you got to a point where there were tons, I mean, if you look at the, the Veterans Garden, I mean, there's a lot of names on there. If you got to a point where you had more people wanting them than you had poles, I don't, I mean, would you go to another street, would you just like, you know, every?
Why not? Why not?
It's a good problem to have, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, and this is, I, I think it's, I think it's a nice idea, I really do. I, I really like it and it's for any, I think the Gold Star families, I'm happy to hear that that would be free. Um, and certainly, and it's open to any other person whose family member served in any, in any of the wars, so it'd be awesome.
So I'm curious, because our, our committee has spoken about, spoken about this. And, and you're absolutely right, we spoke about, well, if, you know, a flag, a bracket breaks and falls on a car, who's, who's responsibility is it? And we had the same, you know, um, conversations. And we were wondering, you know, the Bristol 4th of July, fly their flags and have brackets. And so how is that covered? Is that covered through the town?
It is. Yeah, it's part of, our insurance is called a trust, it's all the, the town.
Correct, correct, the town trust.
Covered under that. So in, I think it's, it's, uh, it potentially could be, and I don't want to make too much of an issue of that. I want to make sure that we're, and it sounds like you're on the same page as we are, is that considering all the concerns and addressing? I don't think it's a reason to say no, it's just a reason to make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is, that's all.
And would we, would we, um, are you, would you be asking the town to put these up as well?
I'm sorry?
Joe, Joe.
I'm sorry, what, I, I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Oh, I said, would you be asking the town to put these up as well? Because, I mean, even when there's different organizations, don't we put them up?
Yes.
It's gonna be like a race or whatever the case may be.
Yes.
Well, I, um, I've approached two, uh, two business people here in town, and they've offered to actually donate their time and their truck in, uh, to help us put up the poles or put up the brackets. The other thing that, uh, that concern about the damage on a vehicle, those brackets are actually made out of, uh, fiberglass material with a rubber cone on the end of it. I think if they come down, I think, I don't think they do, they're not gonna do damage like, uh, like if it was a metal pole or a metal, uh, a metal rod that was holding the, the banner up. They're usually made out of fiberglass and fiberglass, you know, it would have to, uh, I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, it could, it could actually damage a car, but I, I don't think, I don't think that's a, a big issue. But we do have quite a few people that will actually help us put up, put up the brackets. And once the brackets are up, then every year we just repair what gets broken during the winter or whatever, and keep going on and on and on.
You would basically have, right, that, they would have to be corrected, but you're looking for approximately, depending on when Memorial Day is, like May 30th to November 11th.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
And I did go and, and I actually counted all the poles in the parade route, counted the poles after the, um, Lobster Park, in case we, if we wanted to go all the way to Montauk Bridge. And I counted the, the poles from Chestnut Street all the way to the Warren Line. There's quite a few poles, and if, if you add in Medica Avenue, we, I think we have plenty of room for, for, for quite a few banners that, to go up. I know the brackets, for a single bracket, it's, uh, $121, roughly about $122 for, for the, for one banner, the bracket for one banner. And the doubles are a little bit more, which would be that the brackets would have a pole going, um, across the, the pole. It would be showing on both sides of the pole. So you'd see it on the sidewalk side, and you'd see it on the roadside also.
I, I have a couple of questions. One of them, you already answered, you know, who will put them up? And obviously you're looking, the thing. Have you've had a conversation with the town administrator about this?
No, sir, not yet. We wanted to produce, produce, um, so, to announce it to the town council at a town council meeting. That way, you know, everybody would, would see that. And then that, when we'd have more information and then maybe get everybody together when, when, when maybe the, the, the town council starts doing it so that people can actually attend the town council, then we could probably have the whole, the whole committee there, which is not that many people. And then bring stuff to show you and, you know, and, and at that time, but once we get everything organized, then we'll, by then we should know what the prices should be for, for all the banners and all the brackets. And, and we also have to talk to the 4th of July committee too, because we can't, we, we're not gonna impede on what they do with their banners for the 4th of July. So.
That's actually my next point is because you're talking about Memorial Day through Vets' Day. So Memorial Day, it happens that they put up the flag, I mean, the banners for the 4th of July sometimes. So you would have to have an interrupted period, put up flags, take down flags, put up flags, which leads to my point that, when I said on the, on the office there, that all of these postings have to go through the town administrator to coordinate any other, you know, anything else that might go up on the poles. Because as, uh, it was already stated, other organizations from time to time, they request, I know Rajamun's University does, uh, to welcome students back or when there's admissions time. So that's why I asked the question, if the, if the administrator had been, uh, included in this, because he needs to be to coordinate this. So you don't have a conflict with banners up, banners down, you know? And even the size, if you coordinate to have the same size, it makes things a lot easier, you know, to remove and to, to reinstall them.
Well, ours, ours are a little bit smaller than the 4th of July committee. The 4th of July committee uses them a lot, a lot larger, a lot taller.
So I want to piggyback on Joe. So Joe, the price for the brackets for that banner that's flying, um, the quote I got, Joe, is not 130, it's $30. $34 each.
Okay.
$4 each for the brackets. The first year, so the first year for, um, the banner and the brackets, uh, the quote was $135.
That's what I had you on page.
$135 for the brackets. We were asking 200, so the extra money would sit in the account for, as Mary said, for, um, a family who might be in need. So that would be one avenue. And the company said that many of the towns do this, they ask a little more. So that way, families that step forward and ask for, uh, support, we're able to do that for them.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony had one more question.
The other question I have is, how would you go about selecting? I mean, as Mary pointed out, all we have to do is look at the garden here, you know, the Memorial Garden.
Well, I think it should be first, first come, first served. We can even put, it should be first come, first served. You know, somebody who comes to, you know, the committee or submits, they submit a form and they say that they need, um, support, financial support. We would look to see how much money we have in the kitty, uh, in the account to be able to support that individual. We may even look to, as I said, fundraise from local businesses where they can, at the bottom of the banner, you can see, um, um, at the bottom of the banner, it says, "The Mungin Family." It could be supported by, um, I don't know.
A restaurant name, a restaurant.
A restaurant, yeah.
An organization.
Right. Ricotti's, you know, and the, you know, Ricotti's Honors, you know, such and such.
Right. I appreciate the information you just provided, but my question is, who will select the individuals that will be posted that will fly?
The committee.
The committee will select?
Once, once the, the people who, once the person or the, the family of that, of that veteran contacts us with the application, the committee sees the applications come in and we start on our map, we will start figuring out where, what's gonna start to put them in accordance to what else is going on in the town. See, one of the reasons, to answer another question for you, uh, Mr. Texara, is one of the reasons we haven't gone to see, to see the town administrator yet is because we're not all set to go yet. This is the first phase of notification. We still have to find a way to become the nonprofits or a 501(c)(3). Or we, we need to set all that up, all those things up first. Once we have everything in order and with a green light to go forward, then we will sit down, we would like to sit down as a group, maybe get the town administrator to meet us at the Defiance, because it's a big, you know, or the conference room down at the town hall. And then we can actually talk more about exactly what's going on and then go on some type of agenda so that we know not to interrupt anybody else who's gonna be using the poles, uh, at the same time that we'd like to use them. We have, I think, usually a lot of the organizations that would want to use the poles, they'd use the ones where the 4th of July parade goes, that, that central Hope Street all the way down to Lobster Park in Apodaca. If we have to, if we, if not interrupt with anybody else, we can all, we can go past the Lobster Park and all the way to Warren, if we, if we have to. You know what I mean? Or we can, or maybe the town, the, the, the 4th of July committee will allow us to actually share a few down, down the parade route, uh, you know, just to, to show the vet, to show off the vets that we're honoring.
So in addition to that though, Joe, we also talked about the 4th of July banners can fly on one side of the pole and then the Hometown Hero banner can be on the other side of the pole.
Correct.
Pole. You know, so that way it's not interrupting somebody else's, um, banner, that's.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I, um, you mentioned several, uh, Massachusetts cities do this now. What, what are some of those cities that we could have?
Belchertown.
I'm sorry?
East Hampton.
Okay.
Haverhill. And West Springfield.
Great.
Mostly.
When you drive down the road, it's pretty impressive when you see it.
Oh, great. That's, uh, something we can look at, some examples out there. And then you're looking to go live would be 2023 or 2022? What do you, when do you hope to, when do you want to launch?
Well, we'd love to launch whenever we could get it going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever we can get all, all the, all the, the paperwork and all the, the legal stuff together.
So, so our number one.
I'll make a motion.
Just one sec, if you will, I was, no, I was gonna let Erin go, and then Tim, you can make the motion. And Mary, if you would just add it in.
I was gonna go ahead and make.
Oh, you were?
Well, actually, it was, you know, I was just gonna say, this sounds like a really exciting opportunity and, you know, what are some of the next steps? And if there's a motion and ready to go, then let's go for it.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to refer this to the Veterans Council for review and a recommendation, and also to include the town administrator to look at, uh, to be closely aware of any scheduling or, uh, procedures in regards to process of how this would work. So I think he needs to be kept in the loop as well. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion made by Tim, seconded by Erin, discussion?
I just have one other quick point, um, if you don't mind. And that is, just in terms of, like, I'm fully supportive of this, but in terms of maybe coming up with your plan, I mean, to think through, like, what would happen if there were more, more people than poles? You know, that families that wanted this. So would you, instead of doing it every year for, say, three or four or five years? You know, it would be like, you would be this year, this group would be this year. And I think that might be something to think about. I also think that, um, you might want to, like, I don't, I don't remember, maybe they are on there. I mean, you know, like 136, I don't see too many of these on Medicom. I mean, usually it's around Colt Park. Sometimes it starts near the Warren Line, but it's usually Colt Park through downtown for a lot of these promotional things. Maybe a little bit, maybe Gooding Ave. I mean, maybe you could work out with something in your plan that it would be like every other pole, so that whatever other organization, whether it's the 4th of July committee or if it's some other group that's having something in a certain area, say from, you know, Gooding Ave to downtown, through downtown, that it would be every other pole, um, with the veterans, since it's gonna be flying for a number of times. And that way it wouldn't really interfere, but I think it would be nice to, you don't want to have a big blank space, but it'd be nice to have that mixed in. I mean, I definitely think these would be nice to see on the 4th of July.
Yeah.
You know, and Memorial Day, Veterans Day. And I, I think we only have like maybe, I don't know, two or three other groups. I don't know, maybe, it may be a, um, like an event. Some people will just do it, they're sponsoring an event, maybe a concert or a road race or something like that. I think, you know, outside of the 4th of July activity.
So I would say that as, as what's been presented to this council, we've got some great ideas. It's obvious that you are at the beginning stages of it, which is, I, I think is wonderful. Again, I think we all agree, this is, uh, seems absolutely perfectly suited for Bristol. There's certainly some things that need to be worked out, but in anything nice, there's things to be worked out, so.
Just very quickly, and I'm glad that Tim included, uh, the administrator as part of the reference to, because I can see this go a little crazy if there is not a point person that coordinates what things are going where throughout town. So I would definitely stress that the administrator needs to be involved for the coordination of these requests.
Great point. So we look forward to, once the recommendation, honestly, I don't think it needs to come back in front of the council once we get that recommendation. I think it's appropriate to come back in front of the council when it's appropriate. Meaning, you, you talked about needing a 501(c)(3) or whatever it is. There's a multiple steps before the council would then kind of sign off on it. And as, uh, as my colleagues have all pointed out, the administrator and his department heads need to be keenly aware of it, but it sounds like that's what you want to. So it sounds like as long as everybody's on the same page, I think we can get there. So we've covered a lot, but we look forward to hearing. We've covered a lot, but we look forward to hearing more about this when it's appropriate. And also look forward to hearing back from the Veterans Council when they can give us a recommendation. Unless there's any other conversation, uh, we have a motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, to refer to the Veterans Council for a recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I five, and this is town administrator contingency in regards to the renewal of the seasonal theme street parking lot.
Mister Administrator.
Thank you. This is the parking lot uh, on Theme Street at Church that seasonal, uh, six months, uh, May through the end of October. Um, same rate as the last several years, um, and we did budget for it. So um, we'll get to sign a renewal. Uh, it's actually open uh, May first, opened it early. So help with um, downtown businesses and visitors and the mariner and Providence Ferry.
So we budgeted for it. This is in keeping with our past practice and it's beneficial to our businesses and our residents and visitors.
And no, no change to the rate.
What's this council's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman, and have the administrator obviously uh, sign off on our behalf.
I heard motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to uh, renew the seasonal theme street parking lot lease. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
The council, the next item on the agenda is I six, and this is the director. Arts to a voting infrastructure grant.
Good evening, Diane.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So this is in front of us to, A, recognize the six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar grant and authorize the administrator to sign it, correct?
Exactly.
Wasn't that a wonderful, nice synopsis? I may have.
Done.
Is there anything you wanted to add before we vote on it, Diane?
Oh, that's it.
Take money, so.
Yes.
Mister Administrator, uh, Mister Administrator. Mister Chairman. I make a motion that we approve uh, and authorize the signature to move forward.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to authorize the administrator to sign the, I'll say that again, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, it's actually more than that. But six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar grant. Any other discussion?
If I may just squeeze it in, thank you for all the efforts made in order to chase, uh, chase on another grant.
It's another grant that means that we don't have to affect tax rates to get wonderful things done in the community. And fortunately, we see this so much that, you know, we talk about two million dollar grants, but this is so much money and it's free. So I'm glad that you restated that and an outstanding job to all that were involved. So, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Diane. You were very brief. Nice job.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I seven, and this is Susan Mortini, forty-six Highland Avenue, a request for support of a proclamation to plan the first Friday in June to be the National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Chris, is Susan on the call? Excellent. So Susan, if you could state your full name and address for the record and speak to us about your petition, please. We, we can't hear you yet.
How about now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Miss Chairman and Town Council members for letting me speak. Um, this is the seventh year of the national.
Sorry, I'm gonna stop you. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sure. It's Susan Mortini. And it's forty-six Highland Road in Bristol.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is the seventh year that the National Gun Violence Awareness Day has been the first Friday in June. And I'm asking the Bristol Town Council to um, adopt the proclamation that I sent along. And recognize this important day. And the only request is that people wear orange, there's no flag, there are no banners, no parade. Um, it's just, it's a recognition of all the hardships and deaths that have occurred by guns. And with this awareness, the hope is that it'll, people will start to try to find a solution. Whether through research or hopefully by working together with the community, with the police officers, with um, gun owners. And find a solution to this horrible problem.
Counsel?
Um, I, I'm in, in support of the resolution. I think thirteen thousand gun homicides every year is way too many and. It's uh, disappointing that our country's really, aside from all the other countries in the world, uh, with such problem with guns. So um, I think this is an important resolution to adopt. So I'll make the motion to. To move forward on the resolution. Thank you.
So, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by uh, Tim, seconded by Aaron to support the proclamation discussion?
I can't hear anything you're saying.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not used to this new microphone system.
It's okay.
I just wish it was called National Violence Awareness Day, not just Gun Violence Awareness Day. Because there's so much other types of violence that's going on in our society, that it would be nice to. Try to bring some awareness to all of it, in- inclusive, that, that's my only comment.
Okay.
Anyone else? I think it was a good comment, Mary. I think that there's, it's not just guns. Focusing on everything, but. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Tony.
Susan, would you really oppose if it was included just violence day rather than gun violence? Would you oppose to that?
Well, um, so I'm now the Be Smart lead in Rhode Island and Be Smart is a program to try to promote gun safety. To keep guns out of the hands of children and also to me, bring about the awareness of suicide with guns. And that really affects the teenage population tremendously in this country. So to take out guns, that's not really my um, hope. I'm trying to bring awareness to the gun violence. And it's not about taking sides, um, whether you own a gun or not. I think it, we all need to work together. Gun owners, non-gun owners, um, police, town councils, I think it's something we all need to work together on.
Well, there is no doubt on that, on that piece, the, the, the work togetherness.
And I, I, can I say one more thing?
Of course, go ahead.
Um, I, I did contact um, the town administrator and he wrote to me and he said. Thank you for considering me as I share the same goal of reducing gun violence. The town charter established that the town council has the authority to adopt proclamations and resolutions. I would be pleased to support a town council proclamation.
Uh, Mister Chairman, uh, Susan, thanks for bringing this to our attention and, and I think that, you know, certainly um. Guns present certain types of policy problems where, you know, certain times we want to fashion certain types of policy solutions towards guns, like educating folks about. You know, trigger locks and, and things like that, making sure.
That's me.
And, um, and so to me, it's seeing the public health side of it, uh, a little bit. And then also realizing kind of the, the suicide and, and raising the suicide awareness. When, when people have perhaps easy access to uh, guns and, and things like that. And so I appreciate uh, kind of like the public health side that you're kind of bringing to us and. Um, and, and certainly it's um, you know, violence, nobody is in support of violence, but. Uh, certainly some of our solutions that we fashion around this are, are going to be tailored to uh, the education and the public outside and the. Gun take back days and, and things like that that we have. So thank you.
Welcome.
And by the way, uh, Tony and Mary, is that your comments are now on the public record, meaning you've, and, and, and I think we all agree. That it isn't just gun violence, it's violence in general. So that is now part of it. And this is, of course, if we decide as this council to approve this proclamation, it's our proclamation. So if you believe, you know, it's already on the record now, and I think it's a, it's a great point, it's a great additional point. So any other discussion before we vote? Great. Okay, hearing none, we had a motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to support the proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Councilman Bruce Mee in my regards to a resolution, and he has no home in Bristol.
Tim, Aaron?
Uh, Mister Chairman, thank you. Um, as many of you knew, know, last week, uh, there were some stickers with Nazi paraphernalia. That were posted around town and, you know, this has been happening in places like Warrington or Warren and Barrington, Warrington. So uh, in memory of World War Two veterans that fought against Nazi fascism. Hate crime victims and, and survivors and the countless others who were impacted by Nazism and neo-Nazism. Our resolution today is meant to affirm that we stand together with you as a town. That we honor your memory and the continued healing of those who suffered. And that we stand together and saying that this type of vandalism will not be tolerated in our, in our community. And so with that, uh, Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept this resolution. I'll second the resolution.
Discussion?
Yeah. Uh, Mister Chairman, I'd like to just uh, recognize uh, Councilman Lee for all his hard work on this uh, resolution, he put a lot of work into it and uh, thank you, Councilman Lee. Um, I was uh, deeply disturbed by the, to see the Nazi propaganda being put around uh, our community. And I just want to let my colleagues know and the community know that this resolution just reaffirms that Bristol's commitment to being a safe place for all people. Um, it says, we do not condone or tolerate this type of hate. And I also want to thank the Bristol Police Department for their swift action on the investigation. Um, uh, hate has no home in Bristol. So that's what I wanted to point out on that one. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick comment. I mean. I think every, everyone agrees with the, with the sentiment and with the resolution. I do think that um, we've got to be careful not to give tons and tons of publicity to all these people that like getting all this attention. I think the crux of the matter is that. It's not going to be tolerated in our community, that would, our police department will go after anyone who does, does something like that. And they will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. I think that's really the message that we're sending via this resolution. Um, and I think that is the, the simple, most direct way to say it, like, it's not going to be tolerated here. And I do thank our police department for getting right on it and for the, the work they've been doing. Um, and hopefully we'll, we'll find the um, the perpetrators and then very near future.
Mister Chairman, can I just add on to?
One moment, I'd just like to, Tony, and certainly you're next.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, actually, just looking at the bottom, you know. I, I sort of understand the, the intent of the resolution. Um, I think we've gone a little too deep at the top because of one incident. Uh, we sort of wrapping up quite, quite a bit into the package. Um, so I, it concerns me a little bit when we start going down this path, you know, because are we inclusive of everyone? Uh, when we start to mention the few, uh, will anybody be left out? So that's a concern of mine, uh, the upper part of it. The bottom portion of it, where we addressed the, uh, you know, I mean, I, I read the, the, the article in the newspaper. And it's like, well, you know, let us know what the, the police is doing. There was no doubt, no doubt in my mind. That the police would act very swiftly. They would not only act swiftly, they would bring in the resources that would be needed to follow up on this. And it certainly has, has left no doubt in my mind, they will continue. And obviously, I agree with the statement, hate has no place in Bristol, but that's true right across the board. Um, so it sort of concerns me a little bit with the upper part of this resolution, um, but I certainly understand the sentiment of it.
Aaron.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add on to some of the comments that Councilwoman Perel made and, and uh, it's, it is taking that stand. You're right about, you know, we're not going to tolerate this. This is not something that we want here. But it's also sending a message to some of those who were a little bit scared maybe when something like that happened that, you know. We will act, we, we are here to, to act as a town when, when, you know, things like this happen. And whether that be, you know, somebody who's Jewish, uh, who may have been working at the library or, you know, somebody from any other kind of. You know, background where they might have been a little bit concerned about seeing something like that. So. So it's about conveying that message for me too, and that, that is a lot of the sentiment that uh, I wanted to convey in this. And um, I did uh, send it to some other folks to take a look at as well. Uh, there was an email that came out that, um, you know, certainly I think uh, added to, that I, I used to kind of develop this a little bit. And then um, I'll also say that I know that Barrington just passed a resolution the other night, they unanimously, unanimously passed it. And then I believe this week Warren is also uh, going to be acting on their resolution as well. So. So, yeah.
So I'd like to add something. Um, first off, I, I just sent him at the feel of it, I, I very much like, there's a couple of things that have already been said that I, I do agree with. Um, actually, more than a few things that I agree with. One of them is the end part, the last words, and I, I, I maybe if, I don't know if the council's amenable to this, I would. Love to suggest some word changes here. One of them is hate has no home in Bristol. I'd like it more positive. And what I mean by that is instead of saying hate has no home, how about if we say love has a home? Instead of focusing on the negatives is go towards the positives. Second one is that there is a call out of specific people. And instead of being exclusionary, I'd like to be inclusionary and remove all specifics and just say all people. And it would seem like we, the town council, represent all of Bristol. So why not represent everyone in Bristol and say that we call out and we believe that, that love has a place here in Bristol? We don't believe in these things. And I think that, that would seem more appropriate to me. Uh, and I think that when we call out specific people, then we exclude others. And I know that we don't want to do that and we represent everyone. That would be, I'd like to change those if, if obviously there's a motion and a second, so I would ask if that's something that you both consider.
So I, I think I, I hear what you're saying, Mister Chairman. It would be, whereas these symbols are used to glorify unfathomable. Unfathomable atrocities committed under Nazism against all people?
Yes, all the people, and, and I'm open to verbiage on that, but you understand the gist of what I'm trying to. Instead of being specific or actually excluding, I think we should include as opposed to exclude. And I don't think you were trying to exclude, I'm just saying that we should include. And I'm open to verbiage.
Like, you know, I guess part of the reason why, you know, some of these uh, different groups were placed in there is, you know, because of the historical recognition we want to give to. People that have had these atrocities committed to them. There were people that were singled out under Nazism, and so that's one of the reasons why we would want to keep that in there. Is to recognize from a historical standpoint. The atrocities that were committed against specific types of people. And so that's really where I was going at. Um, certainly, I think that maybe one of the things that we could do, if you're amenable to it, would be to keep that language and then add. Or any other people who have been affected by Nazism or something like that. We could do, you know, something like that, that way it includes everybody and there's an umbrella of all people as well.
Could I just s- suggest one thing on this, uh, that section? I mean, if you're gonna, if we're gonna go into the wordsmithing.
I don't mean to, I didn't mean to go that deeply, I just wanted to keep it simple.
But I was, I was gonna say, like, the, if we're going to list the groups, I think it, it would be more the symbols that are used to glorify unfathomable. Atrocities committed under Nazism and other, like, it's almost like Nazism and other atrocities, in other, because. Because Nazism targeted very specific groups, but didn't necessarily go after, you know, BIPOC, for example. And so I think that it's just changing that around so that it might be unfathomable acts committed. Under Nazism and other atrocities against people, something like that. I think that would maybe solve that. I think that would maybe solve that particular problem that you have raised. I don't know, it's up to you, Aaron.
It's your motion, I certainly, but this discussion portion.
So let's, how is that gonna sound again?
So I don't say. Mary had the words, I loved them.
I don't know if they're exactly correct, because I don't have all my, like, computers and stuff here, but like symbols that are used to glorify unfathomable acts committed under Nazism or committed, like Nazism and other, like, and other atrocities against.
I think you stop right and stop right there.
No, even if you list out all these people, I mean, the point is Nazism did not target every single one of these groups. It mostly is Jewish, certain immigrants, LGBT people, certain people. But so if you want to keep those groups, then you just need to broaden out. It's not just Nazism, it's all these hate groups in general.
And and I think since it roots back to Nazism, it has to keep those groups. So why don't, I I agree, man, why don't we just go with your your change?
And I was, and I was very careful, too, about making sure that every single one of these groups had experienced some sort of atrocity or something like that.
I think that that's the point, though, is not that it was Nazism. It might have been other kind of Holocaust, other kind of, you know, terrible acts. I mean, we just heard earlier about the Armenian, you know, population. So I think that's your point, and it's just because this happened to be a Nazi symbol that you felt that had to be in there, but it doesn't really match up completely.
Are you okay with that?
I would be okay with that, I just would need to know what the amendment would.
Well, I just think you need to figure out the sentence, I mean, like, can we come back to this in a minute?
Sure. The other one, the the other suggested change was love has a home in Bristol instead of hate has no home. Talk about the positive, talk about what we want to be. And I also think that if I look at all of you, I don't think we can honestly say that we have a hate-filled community. So I don't want to have a resolution that says we need to push this away. I agree, there's always hate in every community, but I think it's small. Actually, I take that back. I've lived through all of my life, I know it's small. But I love the idea of positive outcome of love has a home. That's my, but you don't have to like my words, but I I'm, that's the gist that I'm trying to get to. And I'm, again, open to whatever it is that everyone is comfortable with. But if we're gonna put our names to this, and it seems appropriate that we should, then I I like those positive outcomes. Then I like inclusionary, so.
Can I just say, Aaron, maybe it's like, whereas these symbols are used to glorify unfathomable atrocities committed against people who are Jewish immigrants, refugees, disability, you know, people with disabilities, members of LGBT, a community, Black indigenous, et cetera. You know what I mean? Because then you not, you just take that Nazism reference right out of that sentence. I think that might cover it.
Yeah, I I think that that would be good, and I'm amenable to Nathan's amendment to it. What I what I want here is I want the council to speak in one voice about this, and I want us to be unanimous in 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 what we're doing here and and the message that we're trying to convey to people.
And we're gonna make the clerk go back seven times and read that to make sure. It's okay, all right. Is there any other discussion? So I can you, can I take that as the motion was amended? Are you, both are you, Tim?
Yes.
And seconded, okay, all right. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, briefly. You know, I'm having a bit of an issue with resolution after resolution. And I know the folks in the community want to hear that we are taking action, that we are that we care, that we are, you know, aware of what's happening in the community. I'm not so sure where the these resolutions take us, because, I mean, just today before I came here, we're talking about the Asian community. I mean, look what's happening right now. So are we gonna have another resolution the next meeting and say, okay, here we take him? You know, I much rather see us take action and show, which we've already done through this whole conversation, yeah, with the what we intend to do, that we are aware of the situation. The police is, you know, doing their duty diligence to address this situation and prevent it from happening and get to the bottom of curb previously. So, you know, when we introduce a resolution after the resolution, I think just the matter of that we are taking an active role in discussion on issues in the community. I I think that does it. I mean, when we start to put pen to paper constantly, what are we getting out of this?
I that was so well put, and that was kind of the point I was saying about being not listing a particular group, because we represent everyone. And it's a great point to say that as issues arise, then would it, and it's not appropriate to have a resolution for every instance. And if you don't, are you lessening the importance of a particular situation without one? So but I do believe that there was efforts and energy put in front of us. I believe that we've cleaned up. We've made some adjustments is a better way to put that. With the verbiage here, I feel it's more positive. And I think that maybe on a go-forward basis, as part of this resolution, is that we take a second look at at doing resolutions. We actually, this council has been very much, our policy has been not to do resolutions for this and other reasons. And I think we should continue with that, but I do believe this is in front of us now. We've made some adjustments and great dialogue about it. I'm comfortable moving forward. I'm not sure what my colleagues think, but I do, your point was perfect, Tony. You captured it exactly what I was hoping to, and I couldn't, so.
Well, I, you know, Mr. Chairman, if I can just kind of have one last word to respond to that. And, yeah, I mean, I get it, you know, the resolutions after resolutions can kind of be time-consuming and bog things down a little bit. But one of the things I will say, though, is that in my, you know, two to three years being here, this is the first ever resolution that I put forward. And so, you know, I, you know, it's not my plan to keep doing that kind of thing all the time. But I thought the moment was critically important for us to speak on this issue. And and I had some requests from the community to do that as well. And, you know, certainly, like I said, you know, this isn't something that I do often, but I kind of felt it was very important, that kind of hit me pretty close to home, so.
Could I just make one other suggestion? Just, like, I'm not a big wordsmith person, but I could.
Say, you said we weren't.
No, but I but I I'm not really big into it, but I can engage with it because then I start thinking about it. So I get actively involved when I faced with this, so let's put it that way. So, I mean, the other way around this issue that seems to have come up would be to take that paragraph out completely, because you're you're talking about neo-Nazi, Nazism extremist nationalists, it's so forth, in the first paragraph, the symbols of hate, you know, that we're concerned for everybody in Bristol, and, you know, that we support the police department's efforts. So, I mean, in a way, you don't really need that, that third whereas. You know, I mean, that's the other way to look at it, if you don't want to go, because, you know, you can either just you could either do, like, I I guess I've come up with, like, three different options that contradict myself, but they're all different approaches to it.
It achieves the goal, but I I tell you what, we.
It's up to it's up to them, because they, you know, Aaron wrote it, but I mean, I'm just like, I'm trying to hear, like, that wasn't one of my biggest, like, my my main thing was getting to the crux of it. I mean, I didn't really have an issue with that particular paragraph, for example. But if that's seems to be the stumbling point, there's a couple of ways around it, and that is like the wording of either, you know, of either just use to glorify unfathomable atrocities.
Maybe this is why.
Against people, like, against people who are blah, 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 or take it out. That's what I would say would be the two options.
Well, I I like that first option that you gave, Councilwoman Pirella. I think that that's something that I think we can get behind and and, you know, certainly, let's, I I say, let's move forward to it and bring it to a vote.
I'm gonna ask for a vote right now. So we had a motion made amended.
Just one more, great. I I I can't allow that. You know, Aaron, you're gonna understand, no way, you know, sort of, I can't, I'm trying to be polite in the word. It's not an issue that you have for a thought, a resolution, not at all, understood. I know the people in the community have been looking for, you know, through the social media and all of that. They feed onto all kinds of stuff. I I I know how that works well, and I'm not about to roll into that. But I will be the first one to step forward. If I have to physically do something in addition to words, I will do that, okay? So please understand that I'm not sort of, you know, feeling that you've got every privilege and every right to do. And I appreciate that you brought this on for discussion this evening, you know? You know, so it's not a matter of the thing, but I just see in it's, the issue is not your resolution as some of the others that we've already addressed this evening, and some of them that we've had before, it's previously. It's let's sign resolution after resolution. What does that take us to? Let's be active. Okay, what do you want me to do besides putting my name on a piece of paper, you know, in words? Okay, what is it that needs to be done? You know, I'll I'll be the first, if I walked on the street and I saw something in place, let me tell you, I'll be the first one to step up. And if I have to put my life on the line for somebody else, I will do that. You know, so, I mean, you know, so that's why, so please don't take that, I don't think it's important, would you, I think it is, and I appreciate it. I do. Certainly has brought quite a bit of conversation to the table, that it is important. And I'm sure that's what these folks have been looking for, it's for this interaction, you know? But it's unfortunate that we get to that point to really have this discussion. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion and seconded with the amended words. Madam Clerk, you you don't need to repeat them right now, but are you clear, do you believe that you can clearly find those in that discussion?
I I can find, I believe I can find it in the discussion. I just want to make clear that we're keeping the third whereas, and we're removing the words under after unfathomable atrocities committed against people who are Jewish, and we're continuing.
Right, 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 yes.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I nine. And this is Vice Chairwoman Pirella in regards to the parking concerns on Noise Avenue and amendments to the residential parking district.
Mary?
Yes, I'll just briefly go over this, and I believe Mr. Pecho is on the call. So I had a request from Jason Pecho of 27 Noise Ave, and there were two issues. One was the removal of a no parking square in a, in at his neighbor, at a neighbor's home, in front of a neighbor's home who has passed away. And that that would be no longer needed at this point. And then also, he addressed a number of no parking squares on that street. And I think he said there were six of them. And when talking to the clerk, she said that there is another petition to add another one that will be coming up at our our end of May meeting. So I think that's something that needs to be looked at, because, as you know, that's a very narrow and sort of somewhat densely populated street. There are a number of apartments on that street as well, so there's students who live there. The second part of the issue that he brought up was that one of his tenants, he recently, this is his, so one of his tenants was not able to get a resident sticker to park on, so this house is relatively close to the Union Street side corner, and they weren't able to get a sticker, a resident sticker for Union Street because Noise Avenue was not specifically listed as a residential no parking zone. And I feel, as I said here, I think that that may have just been an oversight at the time, because Cook Street, Pierce Ave, Milk Street, all of them are included. And as you recall, this, a lot of this no parking on these streets was to was to prohibit people going to Prudence Island and parking for any length of time in the downtown area. It started off with a small area, and it's gone basically from both sides of Wood Street to Thame Street to the entire downtown area, probably from Franklin to the lobster pot, pretty, pretty much. And and all the small streets in between. So I think that was an oversight, probably, so I think, so I would like to hear from Mr. Pecho. And then also probably refer one thing to the police department to look at, and maybe the other to the solicitor to address if that was an oversight to add Noise Avenue.
So Mary, you're, if I understand you right, you'd like to just take a look at amending our downtown parking ordinance to include at least noise and potentially more. Is that correct?
I think that the clerk provided that information to me, and I don't, I didn't send it back with this, but I think that that may be one of the only streets that was left off. I guess the question would be, do you want to go down to Oliver and Bayview in that direction? Or you could, as, you know, was mentioned somewhere in discussion, say, you know, from the east side of Wood Street to, you know, the west side of Thames, from, you know, Burnside or Wall-E Street to, you know, Bayview. We could do that, include all the streets. As I looked at that list that was provided, and, you know, Melissa can send that out to everybody. I think that they were, I think most of the other small, tiny, small streets like this were covered.
So to me, that sounds very reasonable to refer it to the solicitor and the police chief, obviously administrator, and whoever else, maybe code compliance, that would seem and maybe just to the solicitor and the administrator and the chief and allow them to to do things that they need to do.
That's issue two. And then on issue one, I think that would need to be referred to the administrator and to the police chief. And figure out, I know, I keep thinking when Chief Lynch first came to Bristol, he talked about the number of parking issues that come before him. And I think this is one of them. I mean, that street has, it's probably right now half no parking. And and it's all because of the, you know, it's all behind the driveways. And if there's another request and another request, and there's already one pending, like, how far does that go? And that needs to be taken, need to take a look at that. So I think that, especially knowing that there's another petition coming up at the next meeting, it'd be a good time to look at the whole issue, I think.
So that seems extremely reasonable to me. It also seems like we want to make sure that the residents, not only on Noise, but any other place that we're considering adding this to, that they're well aware of it, because it sounds, it sounds like it's reasonable and positive. We certainly want to make sure that everybody's aware, if they had a concern, that they express it at that point in time. Honestly, it sounds very reasonable to me.
We let Mr. Pecho speak, because I know he's probably been on since whatever time we started.
Sure. Do you see Mr. Pecho, Chris? Okay, so, Mr. Pecho, if you could state your full name and address for the record. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Jason Pacico, 27 Noise Avenue.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. And during the whole meeting, as I actually learned a lot of things rolling through it. Mary said pretty much everything I had to say. The parking is getting tight, it's down to nine spots, and it is mostly from behind driveways, but it's expanded a little bit beyond just behind driveways. It is a tight street like the streets recently listed. And I would just like the opportunity to have the street studied and see if some of them are correct and some of them aren't. There's a lot of houses that have double driveways, too, so I'm not sure if there's a cut permit or anything like that, that also was kind of not checked out when it was cut into. Some of the road has curbing and some doesn't, some of it's dirt, and some of it's just one away. So I'm not sure, in that study, I know that the town's doing a lot of revamp of streets. Not sure if, when that happens, if they can look at different curvings, if it's like a Cape Cod curbing, so it's like easier for a car to drive up a little bit off the road to give a little more easement for trash trucks and the snowplow or anything, like an ambulance or anything like that to go through on an easier access. So that's kind of just some of my concerns. And it would be great if people that do live on that street have the opportunity to get that permit to park on Burton Street or Union Street because of just the the tightness of the situation.
Perfect, thank you. Colleagues, and Mary, this was certainly your agenda item, would you like to make a? Sure, go ahead.
Because I don't have that, and nobody can hear me. Oh, boy, that's gonna be something. I can relate, it's like being muted on Zoom. So I would just break this, I would say the first item, which is the re, the removal and the discussion of the no parking square. In looking at that whole issue of the no parking squares on Noise Avenue, be referred to the police chief, the administrator, to look at this parking pla, this parking situation of the street in total, including the new request that will, that the clerk currently has, I believe may be already sent to you to look at for the next meeting. And the second item. And the second item, um, is to refer to the administration and the, uh, solicitor to make sure that Noise Avenue is included in the restricted parking zone, um, which I do believe, as I said, was just an oversight when it was done.
Sure, second? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one. And this is the bid tabulations for RFP nine fifty-two. The bid was for the wastewater treatment facility electrical system improvements. And we received five bids for that today. Bid number one was from Commercial Electric Inc. in the amount of one million, three hundred, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. The next bid was from Watermark Electric Company, Inc., and that was in the amount of one million, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. The third bid was from EW or Depp and Sons, Inc. in the amount of one million, four hundred, forty-four thousand dollars. The fourth one was from James O'Rourke, Inc. in the amount of one million, two hundred, eighty-four thousand dollars. And the last one was from AM Electric LLC in the amount of eight hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
So this is more than a ceiling fan, Mr. Administrator? Holy cow, huh? What's this council's pleasure?
Uh, refer the matter to the administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the administrator, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the, um, J two. And this is the bid tabulation for bid R, um, nine fifty-three for a phase two of the golf course improvements. We had two bids, one from US Pitch Care LLC in the amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the second from Weed and Feed, Inc., um, DBA, DHT Golf Services in the amount of two hundred, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I know I commented on the first one, I have to do it again. That is a tremendous difference, one hundred and thirty-three versus two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Ouch.
Counsel?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the administrator, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is agenda, agenda item J three, and this is for bid nine fifty-four. This is the Wally Beach and Paulsy Harashoff Park seawall improvement project. We received, um, well, I'm gonna go first, we have, we see two bids, um, one in the amount of east, I'm sorry, one from East Coast Landscaping and Construction, Inc. in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. And the other one from Some Co-Echo Contracting LLC in the amount of two hundred, eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Do also want to bring to the attention of the council that we did receive a bid after the deadline at twelve eighteen from Mill City Construction and that was rejected.
Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the administrator, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J four, and this is for bid nine fifty-five for Bristol Community Development Block Grant Administrative Services. And we received one bid today from Christian Belden, Executive Director, um, Church Community Housing Corporation in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour.
Counsel?
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to refer to the administrator, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is a, from Council Chairman Calero with the appropriation from Town Council Contingency Account for an expense relating to the plaque for the Eagle Scout Board of Honor.
This is what it just said, no more, no less, just looking to take it out of council contingency for our Saturday event.
So what is the amount, no more or less?
Uh, one hundred and thirty dollars. And that's from, uh, JL Trophies.
I make a motion, we approve it?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve, any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, that Eagle Scout is this Saturday at one o'clock.
Saturday at one o'clock, excellent. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is K one, and this is from Alan Clipper, the Barrington Director of Bristol County Water Authority with the monthly report for May.
Motion to receive and file?
Second?
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, so we're at the last parts of Mr. Solicitor, we're gonna go into executive session, if you could walk us through that, sir.
Sure, the motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's forty-two, forty-six, five, A five discussions or consideration related to the acquisition or lease of real property, Quidos Restaurant.
Counsel? Does he need somebody to make that motion?
Second?
Motion made by, who made it?
Mary.
Mary, okay, I heard a lot of noise there. Um, motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and good night, everyone.
We will be coming back to public session.
Good night for a little bit and we'll be back after that, how's that? Thanks, thank you.